I need to get my strength of water.
Your water.
Compared to the territory.
I offered him water.
At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Very first on our agenda is a presentation by Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association. So with us tonight is the CEO of Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association, Jack Kegel, as well as Dave Shelkoff, who is our general manager of Marshall Municipal Utilities. I'd like to invite both of you gentlemen up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the take the time here to recognize one of your own. As you probably remember, I've been here a little over a year now, and it's been my pleasure to work with John that entire year. And I have to tell you, the award that he's receiving tonight is well deserved, and I want to just express my thanks to John and to this council for allowing him to be a part of our commission as we work through our issues during the year. John has been extremely supportive, been a mentor to me, and I have appreciated working with him over this last year. And with that, I'm going to let Jack take care of the specific award that we're giving to John tonight and what he has done to get there.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm very pleased to be here. It's just kind of a coincidence. This happens to be the first day of our line workers rodeo and underground school at our training center out on the edge of town. So I happen to be here, and I'm delighted to be able to perform this duty. I've known John now for, it must be 25 years. I remember early in John's tenure here, I participated in a utility strategic planning session. And at the end of that session, I was walking out with the manager, and I said, "That new commissioner you've got really knows what he's doing." And he's shown that over the years. You've just been a wonderful addition, not just to Marshall, but to the public power community all over the state. John has, John served on the commission for 10 years, from 1996 to 2006. Since 2009, he's been a long-serving member of the council and the council representative on the commission. So he's continued to work with us. We're just very grateful. And if I may, I'd just like to read the award that MMU has approved. Community Service Award presented to John De Kramer of Marshall Municipal Utilities in recognition of long and outstanding service to his community in support of municipal utilities. Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association, August 17, 2021. Congratulations, John, and this is very well deserved.
Thank you, Jack. Really appreciate it.
Let's turn around and get a picture.
Yeah.
Turn that one first.
Like this?
There we go.
One, two, three. All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for letting us join you tonight.
Thank you, Jack, and thank you, Dave, and congratulations, and thank you for your service, John. Well, we'll continue with our agenda this evening. We have an agenda before, so are there any additions or deletions to that agenda? If not, we'll proceed with that agenda. The first item then will be to consider the approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on August 24 and from the work session that was held on August 25. The council does have the minutes presented of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections at this time?
I recommend approval of the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Russ to approve the minutes. We will proceed to a vote, and we're voting electronically this evening. We'll tell him. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number three is the first of a number of public hearings that we'll have this evening. Agenda item number three is a public hearing on the South Fourth Street reconstruction project. So we'll have the public hearing on the assessment. Following the public hearing on the assessment, then we will consider the resolution that would adopt the assessment. Immediately after this, public hearing will be the public hearing on the assessment of South First Street. So I'll make some comments about both of those hearing and the process that we go through. And some of you may have been involved in this process before and may be familiar with it. So this is the public hearing on the proposed assessment. When we open the public hearing, I'll ask Jason Anderson, our Director of Public Works City Engineer, to make just a few brief comments. And then it's open to anyone who wants to make any comments at this time. We will note for the record on the whatever written correspondence that has been submitted prior to this meeting. So if people are here and wish to comment, the process is that we'll ask you to come up, use the podium, and then introduce yourself, say what your address is, and then say what you are here to say. If any resident affected by the assessments wishes to preserve their rights for appeal after the closing of this, and then that next level appeal will be through the judicial system, you need to indicate that this evening. So there is a pad of paper on the podium. So take a piece of the paper, write on there, "I wish to preserve my right to appeal the assessment." Sign your name, put your address there, and that needs to be done before we close the public hearing. Dennis, anything else procedurally that we should say?
Not procedurally, no. You just described the process for this evening correctly.
Okay. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing on the South Fourth Street reconstruction project. I'll call on Jason Anderson once again to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? Can everyone hear me on the microphone here? I know we've had some issues in the past. So this project was a 2020 reconstruction project, street and utility reconstruction project, where we replaced water main, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and then, of course, sidewalk, street, and curb and gutter. Included in the packet, you've got a cost breakdown of all the participating funding sources on the project. You'll note that the wastewater utility was responsible for 20% of the cost, MMU 26.4, surface water utility 24.7, municipal state aid or city participation at 17.3%, and we're assessing roughly 11.6% of the project costs. The total project costs, including engineering and administration costs, is roughly $2.97 million. Staff's proposing to utilize an interest rate of 2.84% on this project for those wishing to spread the assessment out over an eight-year term. You've got the assessment role in your packet, and if there are any questions, we'd be happy to address them.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. One thing I neglected to say is that when we now move to the public input, that's the time for the affected residents to make their statements. The council, you know, will refrain from making any comment until all the residents have had a chance, and then we'll open it up for any council member that may have some input at this time. So at this time, we'd open it up for any public comment from any of the affected residents. And again, this is for South Fourth Street reconstruction project. So Jordan, you get to kind of set the stage for how everything goes.
I'm Jordan Carsenson. I live at 801 South Fourth Street. I was obviously affected by the Fourth Street reconstruction. When this project started, I decided to repour my driveway, reconstruct the whole thing along with the work. When we did that, my contractor had met with the city on pouring my slab. With the work that was done in the road on the curb and gutter, the curb and gutter was raised about two inches, and then the height given to my contractor to keep the slab of the driveway left me with less than half percent grade, and now I have water drainage issues off my driveway. I spoke to the city after the fact. They came out, surveyed my driveway, saw that in my 40-foot span, it only drops about two inches, which confirms the less than half percent grade. They said that that height did not need to be there because there is no sidewalk present, so my driveway could have slopes, excuse me, straight to the gutter instead of staying at curb height. So with that, now I have to replace my driveway again and tear out the apron that was laid by the city. If I can't do anything with that apron, no concrete contractor will touch it. And so now I'm stuck having to redo all my concrete that I already did, you know, along with this work. So that is my concern.
Thank you. And Jason, you have that information, too?
So I need to sign, fill out something?
If you want to preserve your right to appeal the assessment, kind of sounds like your issue is maybe separate from the assessment, but you could sign just to preserve that.
Okay.
Name, address, I hereby appeal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other affected property owners that wish to speak to the South First Street?
Fourth.
Fourth, or South Fourth Street, excuse me, yes.
I'm Linda McGrath. I own the house at 401 Catherine Avenue. And first of all, I never got a letter about this whole thing. And so it was a big surprise when I see I owe $5,700. I didn't realize that's how you charge the people along the street. I thought it all went into the property tax, and it was paid from there, and then you just raise the property tax as you need it to. I just think it's hard to come up with $5,700 at one time. And I know you can do it over eight years or something, but it would be like $1,000 for each year extra, which is a lot, too, when you're on a budget and you're a senior citizen. My daughter lives there now, and the sewer part, we had problems once in a while with the sewer from our house backing up, and it hasn't changed it at all with the new sewer system. So I don't know. When I talked to someone at the courthouse about this, they said the $5,700, everybody had to pay, and there was no minimum or anything. So I just was not happy with the way things went. It would have helped if I would have known things were gonna, you know, got the first letter. Evidently, that was sent out, but I never got a letter. And I live in the house. I'm her daughter. And I know there's always been, like, issues with, you know, the sewer, like, it would always back up in the basement and stuff. And actually, we saw that it got worse after the, it was weird because I don't know if it just is a coincidence or whatever, but now we can't even use our basement bathroom, like, unless, you know, for minimal issues, you just can't really use it since this whole thing went through. So it definitely hasn't benefited us, you know? And I know she said in the letter, it said it was like, however much, hundreds of thousands of dollars are saying it's benefiting.
343,000 of benefit to the homeowner.
Yeah. So it's just frustrating because we're paying money for something that seems to not have benefited us at all. So.
I don't know if you want to make comments at this time, Jason, on those specific questions, or you wanted to hold off and handle these all?
Whichever you'd prefer, Mayor. Either way.
Okay. Probably two things to address here. One is the procedure for the assessments over time, the ability to defer, if that's a possibility, which may be Dennis's issue, and the, probably the issue of the service line.
Sure.
And then you should probably sign it, sign this as the owner of the property.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have her sign it.
Yep. So Jason has some notes on your questions. He'll address that at the end of the hearing. Anyone else wish to speak as part of the public hearing? Comments from the council on the South Fourth Street project?
I'll wait until, I want to hear what Jason, how Jason addresses it.
Okay. So staff comments, Jason or Dennis?
This goes to the McGrath, was that the last name?
Yeah.
Yes.
You do have a right to defer based upon retirement age, those types of things, but you can only defer, not pay that, spread it out over time, if it's your homestead. And I understand with your daughter living there, if you're not living there, it's a rental unit, it's not homestead, so deferral is not available. That's not an option for you to, you know, not pay now. So that's, deferral is not an option, as long as it's not the homestead.
So the assessment would be over eight years at?
At, yes, at the.
And then that would be added onto property taxes?
Correct.
Okay. And Jason?
Regarding the sanitary sewer conversation, this project did not replace the sanitary sewer service line at this property. This property is served off of Catherine Avenue, and this project just stubbed out 50 feet or so from the center line of Fourth Street up Catherine. So we stopped short of where their sanitary sewer service line is located. If there's any issues there, they'll need to seek the consult of a plumber to look into that and see what the concern is. We did replace the main, the sanitary sewer main down Fourth Street, and a stub up Catherine, and we know that that's good and it should be working fine.
So her service is not on Fourth Street, it's off of Catherine?
That is correct.
Okay.
And this is a corner lot, then?
This is a corner lot at Fourth and Catherine, correct. As far as, one other item about notice, that everyone on the property was served with an improvement hearing notice prior to the start of the project.
Jason, you bring up the corner lot thing. Has Catherine, that has not been redone in quite a while then. I thought Catherine was redone within the last 10, 15 years.
It may have been milled and overlaid, but it's not been reconstructed.
It has not. So is Catherine on the schedule in the future?
We had it listed on our CIP. I believe it's still there, but it's toward the back end. It'd be a ways out. There's other priority areas ahead of this.
And the reason I bring that up is I think the assessment, the max assessment lasts for 10 years, so if Catherine would be done, like, in six years, they wouldn't necessarily be hit with the other $5,700, correct?
You're on the right track. The look-back period is actually 20 years.
Oh, it is 20 years. So if Catherine gets done, you do have that advantage of 20 years of not paying that full assessment. Because I live on a corner lot, so I'm aware of that look-back periods.
Other input from the council, Steve?
I might have missed this, Jason, but you said that the notices of the assessments and the prices were all sent out to residents in the affected area?
Well, I was just stating that before we do the project, there's an improvement hearing, and we send out notices for that. And we also hold a public informational meeting with the neighborhood. So we try to get out and let people know that this project is coming, and we try to notify the residential property owners in particular that their maximum street assessment is $5,700, and they're also responsible for sewer costs for the service line and some driveway costs. The new special assessment policy is much more generous with the driveway costs, and we're seeing that reflected in this assessment role, where there's a lot lower driveway assessments than there would historically have been. Okay, thank you.
Any other input from the council, Russ?
And Jason, correct me, I think you just referred to it, because you held those public meetings at MMU office, because I believe I attended them both for both Fourth Street and Fourth Street. Is that correct?
That is where we hold the public informational meetings. That's correct.
Thank you.
We try to have an informal meeting where people can just come in, and our team is there, and it can be an open conversation. Okay.
Any other input from the council as part of this public hearing? Any other member of the audience, affected property owner, wish to speak as part of this public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I so moved.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll now move to the resolution. Are there any questions about the resolution? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move the resolution adopting the assessments, noting the appeals and requests to preserve.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number four. This is the public hearing on the South First Street reconstruction project. This is a public hearing on the assessment. Jason, once again, I'll call on you to introduce and conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. This project was a reconstruction and utility replacement on South First Street, generally between Southview Drive and George Street. We completed water and sanitary sewer replacement, as well as storm sewer catch basins and leads, where we added some extra inlets for system capacity. We also added sidewalk on the west side of the street on this three-block stretch where the sidewalk wasn't present prior. Also did some lift station work on the sanitary sewer lift station at De Shepherd and First. Also included in the packet, once again, is a breakdown of the cost with the different participating funding sources. You'll note 22.5% paid by wastewater, 29.2% paid by MMU, 10.1% from the surface water management utility, 23.3% paid by the city, and 14.9% assessed to property owners. Total project costs with engineering and administrative costs came in at $730,539.96. Once again, staff's proposing an eight-year assessment term at 2.84% interest if residents choose to go that route, and the assessment role is included in the packet.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. We'll note for the record, we have two letters of appeal that have been submitted, one from property owner Ben Walker and one from property owner Ed Carberry. So you have, with those letters submitted, you have preserved your right for appeal. Now we'll open it up for a public comment on the proposed assessment from, from any affected property owner.
I'm going to take this piece of paper for the other project and give it to Kyle.
Yes.
Hello.
Welcome.
Oh, hi. My name is Ben Walker. I submitted a letter, as was just mentioned. I have a couple of questions about how all this has played out. I would like to note, though, that while I do object to the proposed assessment, I do understand that this is, we're trying to find ways to pay for public goods. So I do understand this. I understand that we do have to find ways to make all this work. So while I do protest, I do understand the difficult situation everyone's in to try to make all this work. So I had a couple of questions. It's my understanding that, and I could be wrong, that with the special assessments is that residents or owners are meant to be assessed fees or chargeings for the benefits received, for what that is. I guess I'm a little confused about how that is determined. So I would like to hear how that's determined, what's the cost variance, like, what that is. And by that, I mean, why were we charged a specific amount versus another amount? Parlaying on that, I guess I have a question on if the maximum amount was 5,700, why were residents charged the maximum amount as opposed to another amount? And why was I charged above the maximum amount as it was other people on the street? Maybe I'm misunderstanding that. I thought I heard that being said, and maybe, I'm sure there's an explanation for that. The South Fourth Street, another question I have, the South Fourth Street residents were asked to foot the bill of about approximately 11% of the total cost of their road. Our First Street was 15%, oh, 14.9%. So again, I was wondering why? What's the discrepancy? Approximately 4% difference is a lot of money. So those are some clarifying questions I have. My other comments I'd just like to make is that it's a lot of money to ask people to pay for, for something that needed to get done, yes, to make sure we have functioning sewage and water and roads. I do understand that. I just, it's a lot of money to ask to pay, for people to pay. And I've got three kids at home. That's approximately almost $6,000. That's a lot of money. And that can go a long way. But instead, I'm going to be paying for roads that I already pay for, at least I thought I did, in my taxes. But I guess that's how budgeting goes. Again, I understand the reality of the situation. I'm just, when it hits you, it's a disappointment that we can't come to a less-than-maximum charge for public goods for those on the street. I don't have to sign anything, though, because I've submitted a letter?
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. And again, we'll have your questions addressed by Dennis and Jason at the, once all the public at the once-all the public comment. But just for the record, Dennis will provide the background of how the maximum assessment had been determined by the court. And Jason, one of the things you'll address is the assessments amount that over or above that maximum, how that happens. So, okay. And also the 11% as opposed to the other percent on Fourth Street, which probably is, well, you can explain the mathematics of that. Okay. Other public comment, Ed?
Ed Carberry, 700 South First Street. I don't have any prepared speech or remarks. I think everybody knows how I feel about this from the beginning. We were the first house to be in that whole area. We talked to the people on the city council for about 50 years. And we always led to believe that, because we asked again, because we planted more trees, do we ever expect this to happen? No, no, don't worry about that. That's not going to happen. So it did happen. That is upsetting. First of all, I want to make a compliment. I think, maybe I haven't checked with anybody else, but the contractor, Dimick, is that how you pronounce that?
Dimick, yeah.
I think they did a really fine professional job. I mean, they allowed us to get in and out when we wanted. They, you know, they put up with a lot of junk, I guess, and I think they did a fine job. The one thing is, I don't know if Dimick had anything to do with the quote "grass" that was planted, but I mean, that is ridiculous. So I'm curious whether the city intends to do something else about that, or am I at liberty to plow it under as I suggested and replace it with the wildflowers which had been destroyed, which I have put 15 years of my life into, and they're all under concrete now. So I want to know if that's possible. And then would somebody please explain how, I just don't know what some of this stuff means, but on the cost breakdown of the project, I see $0 for sidewalk. Now, why does that, does that mean the city's not going to pay for any of the sidewalk, and it all comes back to the individual, and that's why zero? Because I don't think it was zero. And that leads to the last point, yeah, $5,700. Wow, I misunderstood. My ears need to be cleaned out, because I heard a much lower number than that discussed at the first meetings that we had, and that was not it. But if it was $5,700, then how come mine is nearly $6,100? Is that because I gave them so much trouble about the wildflowers? I don't know. How do you fight City Hall? Like I said, you only, we've only been there for 53 years, so little changes like this are exciting. Not. What exactly can somebody explain is this deferred payment of the assessment? Does that mean deferred, like for eight years, and then when I'm dead, somebody else has got to pay for it? Or does that mean deferred, does that equal forgiven? I'm not sure what that means. I would really like to have that clarified by somebody, please.
Okay. So again, the several questions there that will be addressed by staff, the boulevard grass and the warranty on that, given that they've had drought conditions since they've been planted, the sidewalk portion of the assessment, and then Dennis, the explanation of the ability to defer. I think I got everything there. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak as part of the public hearing on the assessment? Turn to the council for input. Any comments from the council?
Jason, a lot of driving First Street was the undersizing of the sanitary, not sanitary, the storm sewer, correct? Or no, sanitary sewer to prevent future backups.
We did make some, what we feel are some improvements that should help with that issue that happened a few years ago.
The July 3rd storm in 2018, I think there was significant backup along this section of town.
Correct. I mean, you know, the work that we do is no silver bullet, but we feel that the improvements we made should be very helpful in that regard, yes.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, the grass that Mr. Carberry describes, I would agree with him. I think that we need to definitely look at that, not only at that project, but a lot of the projects in town. Now, the grass is just ripped up, and I'm not in favor of that. I think that we need to demand, whoever the contractors are, that they do a much better job. When they rip it up to do construction, we need to make sure that it gets replaced as good, if not better. And that's just my feeling.
Any other input from the council? Okay, Dennis and Jason, comments on those questions?
Would you like to go first, or would you like me to go first? Okay. So some questions that we heard, and we can chip in if you think I missed something, but I've got a little bit of a list here. How are the special assessments calculated, you know, generally? How come I have a max and, or how come they don't?
Could you please speak, Al?
Sure. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay. The question of how special assessments are calculated came up, and we have a spreadsheet where we go through all the pay items on the project, and we allocate them to the different, to different areas. If it's a sewer pipe, it goes to the sanitary sewer utility. If it's a water pipe, it goes to the water utility. If it's a street cost or a sidewalk cost, it goes to what we call the street linear footage cost. Once we've determined those things, we allocate some of the street costs to the utilities. So the utilities under the road are helping to reduce your assessment by paying for the street above their pipe. So that greatly reduces the number. That's why you see some of the utilities having a higher cost share and the residents having a lower cost share. So once we do that, we come up with a frontage rate, a dollar figure per linear foot that we'll assess to the property owners, and we work that out based on frontage. So if you have 100 feet of frontage and the rate is $50 per foot, you multiply those together, and that's your number. If that number is greater than $5,700, you will not pay more than $5,700. In addition to that $5,700, you have to pay for your sanitary sewer service line that comes from the main at the center of the road all the way to your property, and you have to pay for some costs of your driveway. As I mentioned in the last hearing, the costs of the driveway have been greatly reduced from past practice. The council now pays for 12 feet of driveway width for removal and replacement. So if you have a 12-foot driveway, you'll pay $0 in driveway costs. If you have a 24-foot driveway, you'll pay for 12 feet of it. So that's been really helpful, and as I've noted, you see that reflected in some of these numbers. They are lower than they would have been in past years as a result of that.
So the reason why it would show as zero for the sidewalks is because the street had hit that $5,700 maximum?
Thank you for tying into that. I probably should have just deleted that line from the whole spreadsheet. The sidewalk costs are wrapped into the street frontage costs. Everybody shares the cost, including the city, for the sidewalk. So no one person, just because it's in front of your house and not somebody else's, pays for the sidewalk on a project. It's split amongst the project. That's how it's always been done here.
And then Dennis, this would be a time that you could, because you were involved in the court action that set what the maximum assessment could be.
In 2006, there were a number of street projects going on that had a number of objecting people who proceeded with their appeals to the court. There was a lengthy court trial, and that the court at the end of the day said, a new road, which includes sanitary sewer lines, water lines, storm sewers, there is a benefit, there is an increase in value. The theory was that, you know, your sewer's going to work longer, you shouldn't have any problems. A new set of infrastructure and street is worth more than a house with the old infrastructure. So that's the benefits. At that time, the court said in 2006, the benefit is $4,400 per parcel. Inflation over time that has ratcheted up about $100 a year, which is now $5,700 for the street improvement costs. That's the benefit per lot. And that's carried system-wide. Special assessments have been an ongoing discussion with staff and council for many years. If you look at that spreadsheet that's in front of you, there are two or three different options available. How do we calculate so that it impacts the property owners in the least financial way? One of those factors in the square footage of your lot. One of them is the frontage of your lot. Whichever number, doing the, putting the calculations together, whichever number is less is what is assessed. No more than the $5,700. So if it comes in that, when I look at this, there are some of those in the $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 range for just street costs, those are lowered to the $5,700. And then you start with that, you add, as Jason said, sanitary sewer lines and driveway costs. That's why, Mr. Walker, you were in the $5,800 range. It's 57 for the road, plus probably another 184 driveway, something like that.
And then Jason, would you address the boulevard warranty on the seeding?
Yes. We're not satisfied with the turf establishment on our projects this year either. We'll work with the contractor to reseed. I'm not sure if that's occurred yet in this project. I'd have to speak with our project manager, our assistant city engineer about that. But I know that they are to be reseeded, and we'll follow through on that. I think one other question that remains is why the South Fourth Street project had a different percentage assessed versus this project? And the simplest answer is that there was a much larger street section put into that project. It was more gravel, more blacktop, because it's a state aid route. And we take some of those costs right off the top away from the property owners, because just because you live on that route, we're not going to assess you for the extra cost of the added granular and the blacktops, or our state aid fund pays for that. So that already takes away a large chunk of burden from the property owners. And then you add into it, there was more storm sewer replacement, significantly more on Fourth Street, and also another, there was a block on First Street that didn't have some sewer work, I believe it was. So there was less participating utility involvement on South First Street, and the road section was bigger on South Fourth Street, making the percentages a little different.
Okay, thank you.
And then Mr. Carberry, deferral. If you are age 65 or older, or if you are permanently disabled because of a physical or mental impairment, you can't, or if you're active military, you can ask that the county defer these costs. That doesn't mean they go away, and it does continue to accrue interest at the 2.84% until it is paid and is due and payable upon your death, or sale of property, or if the property goes from a homestead classification to a non-homestead. Those are the triggering mechanisms which would cause the deferral to be paid at that time. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, input from the council? Any other property owner, Ben, you have a comment? Yeah, I need to have you talk into the microphone because of the broadcast.
Sorry, thank you. Just, I didn't quite understand one of the answers to the questions for the $5,700. That makes sense with the property line, the coverage, sorry, yeah. I did have a question that I didn't feel like was answered, and the question was, why were we assessed that amount? Is that amount required? Are we required to be assessed by that when a project like this is done, or did the city choose to assess us that amount?
So if I...
Does that make sense? Like, are you required to do that, or is that something that the city said, we will be charging this amount, or could you have charged less?
If the total project, Jason, you can explain, if the total project came in less, the assessment would be less. But in all these cases, the total assessment would, or it would be well over what the maximum would be. Is that correct?
Correct. We assess per the approved special assessment policy of the city marshal, and that's where we determine those participating utility costs of the street, for example, and we start to subtract costs away from the property owner. In your case, you were not assessed $5,700 for the street. You were assessed $5,277.45 for the street, less than the maximum. So that's not where the total bulk of your cost came from. You also had some driveway costs that were included in there. So hopefully that helps answer the question. You were not assessed, just blanket, a maximum.
I think I understand, yes.
Can we just see that breakdown, so we know how the numbers came?
Numerous property owners have stopped in since receiving the mailer and met with me to go through their assessment. And that's what we really encourage, that folks come in and review it with us. We're happy to meet whenever we're available.
Yeah. I think I understand. If you would indulge me, one last. So the rate that is determined by that, that is non-negotiable? As in the city, that's what the city chooses to spend on that? So I got charged, what, five something? Is that blanket, that there's no way to mess with that as a city, or no?
The maximum assessment of $5,700 is set annually by resolution through the fee schedule with the city council. As for the actual levied rate per foot on a project-by-project basis, that is calculated completely by following the assessment policy and working through the math and all the pay items and determining what that rate is. The rate changes project-by-project, depending on how many participating entities that are on the project. So it's not negotiable, per se, in that we follow the same set of standards to develop the assessment role, and then we present it to our city council for their consideration.
Okay. So the formula that's used is based off of each project, it's calculated each time for each new project, yes?
The formulas are always the same, and the process is generally the same. It's just that the bid numbers on every project and the work that we're doing is always different, so therefore rates can be different.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. Any other input?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just wanted to say one thing for the public. This, the special assessment, as Jason has alluded to, and I think Dennis alluded to, has been a big issue for us on an almost annual basis. And the question comes down to, do we do special assessments to pay for these projects, or do we just scrap special assessments and raise the property taxes overall? And there's advantages and disadvantage to each procedure, because ultimately, we want to have good roads and good infrastructure. We don't want them. We need them to be the good city that we are. The problem is, is that if we do a switch, because we've done the special assessments for years, decades, eons, then we would have to switch over, and the tax burden from the levy, the generalized levy, would go up significantly. Special assessments would go away, probably forever. And then the people who, like Mr. Carberry and Mr. Walker, who are assessed this year, if we change that for next year, well, where's the fairness in that? So it's an ongoing discussion, and when we have those discussions, and they're on the agenda, I would encourage people to come and listen to us and give us input, because that'll help us decide what the people want. Because it's a, everybody knows that projects cost a lot of money. Construction costs a lot of money. We need to have it. Who pays what? I'm really glad that we have the maximum of $5,700. I think that was a really good benefit. That wasn't the way it was about five years ago. And so that really made a big difference. But it's an ongoing struggle that not only Marshall, but all cities struggle with.
And on top of that, Steve, because I know five years ago, when I got on the council, we pushed this. The special assessments have been kept down because we've changed a lot more of it to ad-vorm, which benefits the citizens. I mean, we're trying to work that way, but like you said, Steve, we just can't do it overnight. But there's less and less of percentage being passed on through special assessments, and like several people said, well, I pay for it by property taxes. More and more of it is going in property taxes. Like, Ed, you live on a corner lot. There's a special assessment we took out that you used to get hooked for if they did a street a little ways away, because of a corner lot. I think that's been corrected now. So this is, it is an ongoing thing. You're correct. And it is a moving project or product. That public input is good, and I think over the last four years, and I know Glenn has since left, but Glenn Barical really worked hard on that, that I think our special assessment policy has gotten much better. Is it perfect? No, but it's a lot better than it was five years ago.
Any other input from the council, Russ?
Mr. Mayor, Jason, just refresh my memory, because this project could have came in at a higher bid if we a higher bid if we would've left the road the same width. Is that correct? We narrowed the street. It wouldn't have probably affected the individual homeowner of maximum assessment of $5,700, but the overall project could've came in at 10%, 15% higher if, if we would've left the street width the same. Is that correct?
It could be said that the, we saved some money that way. That is true. There was a small narrowing of that street.
Good.
Ross, thank you for bringing that up, because I think that's a really good point, because the, as Jason said, their max, or their assessment for the street was around $5,200. And it certainly would've raised that, had we gone with the, with the wider street. It would've raised that $5,200. So the assessment that he got would have been higher.
Any other input?
Good point, Russ.
This part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll then move to the resolution, or the questions about the resolution? If not, is there a motion?
I would move the resolution.
Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Craig, discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing on the ice and snow removal and weed elimination for private properties, City of Marshall. This public hearing, Kyle, are you going to take this? I'll call on Kyle Box, city clerk, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, another annual item that the council takes on every year. In the resolution, there are four properties that will be assessed, or could be assessed for snow removal from the last, over the last year, from, since the council took action. Notices have been sent to the property owners. They do have 30 days from adoption, if the resolution is adopted. To take, to pay these assessments off without any interest, otherwise they will be sent over to Lyon County to be assessed. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there anyone here to speak to this public hearing regarding the, the weed and snow removal? If not, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ to close the public hearing discussion. We'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. The motion does pass. When I'll consider the resolution on the weed elimination and snow removal. Are there questions about that resolution?
Move the resolution. I'll second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John, discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Then our final resolution is a public hearing on 306 Athens Avenue. This is a public hearing regarding a home property tax abatement request. So we'll have the public hearing on this. Is there, Kyle, are you going to conduct this public hearing? Kyle Box, city clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the, in the packet tonight, there is a resolution for home top, home property tax abatement. In the background material, you'll see the difference of improvement in the amount of assistance to be provided. I can answer any questions, if there are any.
Are there, is there anyone here to speak in the audience to this public hearing? Any questions from the council regarding this item on the public hearing?
Move we close the public hearing? I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John to close the public hearing discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. The, the resolution, questions about the resolution on the home property tax abatement?
Move the resolution. I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John, discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay. That takes care of the public hearings for this evening. We'll then move to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda. And they include the resolution accepting the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. Consider the resolution of an amendment to the personnel policy, appendix B, the maximum allowable reimbursement per diem rates, wastewater treatment facilities improvement project. Consider the application for payment to Magny Construction, and consider the payment of the invoice to Bolton and Mink. The Bruce Street gravel resurfacing project, consider the authorization to receive quotes. The, for Independence Park, Four Bay Expansion Project, consider the authorization to advertise for bids. Consider a quitclaim deed on Outlet B in the Car subdivision one. Consider the approval of the room rental policy. Consider the authorization to declare vehicles surplus property for the Marshall Police Department. Consider the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from Fund 609 to the Capital Fund, Project Fund 401. Consider the resolution designating uniform election dates and polling locations. Consider the merit sender bonding request. And then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any member, any item on the consent agenda, any item, any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Number 11, please.
Any other item? If not, is there a motion for the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So move. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Don, discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number 11, this is the Independence Park Four Bay Expansion Project. Authorization to advertise for bids. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, Jason. You said the majority of the project costs will be funded through surface water. Can 10%, 20%, 90%? Where are we going to get the funds after, after surface water?
We'll have to have some discussion on that, I guess. I, I thought that when we talked about this at a few meetings prior, we, we did mention this in our, our memo at that time, that there may be a small amount of funding required away from surface water. But we'll look carefully at the project plan and the impact to the park, and make sure that we're fair to how much the surface water management utility can pay there, and try to minimize that impact. But I think it would be a small number that wouldn't be covered, probably, when I say small is relative, but under, under $20,000.
And was it in the budget?
It, this similar to the other Trails project, we would expect to fund it through that same manner.
So it was not in the budget?
It was, talked about it at the same time as the other project, as all being a cohesive plan, ideally.
So not in, not in the current budget?
Not in the current budget. That is correct.
The, as long as we're on this topic, Jason, the, do you anticipate that, and again, you, we're authorizing the advertisement for bids, they're going to come in in October, you don't know what the weather's going to be, but do you think there will be coordination in the timing between this and the remainder of the trail replacement projects that I think started this week?
Yes. We don't see an issue with the coordination of the two projects, because they're, they're really kind of separate from each other, and they're out of, they're not sharing some of the same space, not at least too much. So we think that everyone should be able to play, play well together in that area, and really sync the two projects up nicely.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? If not, is there a motion to authorize the advertisement for bids?
So move. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John, discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number 19. This is a tabled item. This is the item that was tabled. It was a diversion channel slope repair and sheet piling removal project, the awarded a bid. The, one of the reasons that this item was tabled because was, there was an absence on the council, so we didn't have a full council at that time. So there was a motion made to table this item. The information that we had presented at our last meeting, including the memo from the city engineer, including all of the supplemental information, has not changed. It's the, the same information. So the issues discussed at the last meeting are exactly the same as it is right, right now. So it's, so the first action would be to remove this item from the table for consideration.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig, discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. So it's back up for discussion on the council. Questions, or what are, what are the wishes of the council on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to, again, state that while I appreciate the, the efforts by staff to, to try to get the lowest amounts and stuff, the reason why we went to the electronic bidding process was to make sure that we took some of the, the labors of kind of fitting in some of the bidding process and practice and, off of our staff, and to make it absolutely more clear and, and concise, and hopefully more efficient for both the contractors bidding and for staff managing the bid. And I would contend that if we stuck strictly to the, the program that we purchased and, and agreed to use for bidding, the bid in question, the low bid, wouldn't have been opened. And we wouldn't know what that bid is. And that's my contention. I, I appreciate the contractor. That contractor's done a lot of work for us in the city in the past. I'm certain they will in the future. They've done very good work. But I think if we don't stay with the program, we're right back to where we're kind of being arbitrary. And I don't want our staff to be put in that position. I think we need to be very transparent, very clear, and I think by using the, the program that we've accepted and approved, I think we eliminate a lot of that. And I think it takes a burden off of the staff, and I'm in favor of that.
Other input from the council? And Mr. Towne from Town and Country Excavation is in the audience, and I'll allow you to speak if you want also. So, John?
I guess, thinking on this quite a bit over the period of time since our last meeting. I'm still looking at this as, first of all, it's $14,000 that we do not need to spend. You know, as we're looking at levy, that's about 3% of our, what we're, added levy is. So I do still stay with the, the lowest bid. I understand the position and the voting. However, this is not the first time this has occurred elsewhere. I know this is the first time for us. Doing a little bit of digging back in 2019 in Sibley County, they had a similar voting, same program, voting. They had a, an addendum that came out, actually, I wasn't real sure if it was the same day, very close to the same day. Their lowest bid did not acknowledge the addendum, and they ended up awarding that bid anyway. It just happened to be that that lowest bidder was RNG Construction, which was our second in line in this case. There was a, a hundred and some thousand dollar savings, so it was a little higher dollar amount. In speaking with an individual from Sibley County, they said there really was almost no question in their mind that they were going to accept the lowest bid because of the price difference, that it, and again, it was an immaterial addendum. It was not an issue that they, that needed to be addressed. It turned out that RNG did not acknowledge the addendum, but had already turned in the bid. And they ended up accepting the bid. So I, you know, it happens. And it goes both ways. It works sometimes to somebody's advantage and not. I go back on the fact that, you know, I don't like when things like that happen, but stuff happens. And, you know, I can't see spending another $14,000 by the city, so.
Jim?
I was just in a similar, well, not a little bitter, but I just bid a project through a bid, a program such as Close to Bid Vault. And again, Jason and I chatted about this. There was an addendum sent out on that project on Friday. We had to bid it on Tuesday. That architect did personally send me an email saying that there's an addendum out there, please, you know, take a look at it. I'm not saying the staff should do that, but it was a short timeframe, just like this one. And I think if you'd have shot out even a phone call, I, I don't think about acknowledging his email, he probably would've called me, simply because he wants to save money, too. So it, it does happen, and I find it interesting, John, that, that we have, the contractor that's second here has been on the flip side of this, too. So I also look at it's, it's $14,000. And if Sibley County, they had no issue doing it there, I, I think they set a precedence for us to think about.
I think the, there was also some previous, or discussion at the previous meeting of a minimum time period prior to the bids being due and turned in, that addendums would not be issued, whether it's two days, whether it's four days. Other input from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I can disagree with the comments that have been made. I, I have to agree with Councilman Schaefer, because we spent the money for the program. I think Administrator Hanson brought that up at the last meeting. The, we bought the program for a reason. It's my understanding that two emails were sent out to contractors. Three other contractors acknowledged the addendum? Am I correct? And two other, two separate emails were sent out?
Correct. City staff is aware of the one email that goes out, because the program informs us that it, it will do that when we issue an addendum. We did check with the company of our Bid Vault program, and in this instance, the contractor should have received two messages. One to say that an addendum was issued, and another to say that you should resubmit your bid. But from staff's perspective, you know, how they get notified, it doesn't matter. We know that they were notified.
Thank you, Jason. I mean, while I can't, like I said, I can't disagree with Councilman DeCramer and Councilman Lozinski. I, I don't know if we need to set a precedent. I mean, we've got the Bid Vault program for a reason. It's unfortunate. I mean, maybe it's, I hate to use this terminology, maybe it's an expensive lesson for everybody, staff included, that we don't send out an addendum this close to bid opening or whatever. I just, my feeling is that we award the bid to the contractors that completed the Bid Vault program as it's meant to be. That's just my opinion.
Other input? Don?
I guess, thank you for tabling this, since I was the, the council member that was not present for the original discussion. But in reading, right in front of me here, it's, and this is from our own city staff, reviewing the addendum, number three, it is not requiring any additional information. It's not changing the scope of the work. It is not changing product quantity. It's not containing any new proposal sheet. It does not change the nature of the work to be completed. And by city staff's determination, it is largely non-material in nature, because it is a question-and-answer type of an addendum. So if you're looking for, I'm a pretty simple guy. Went to a pretty small high school, and I figured I did pretty well in my life. But, you know, when city staff is saying that, you know, if we accept it or not accept it, nothing's going to change. Not a damn thing. So why don't we take the low bid? We, we've heard from Sibley County has done this already, so there's a precedent already out there. So I, I guess, I'm, I'm, I'm not a tightwad, but I'm for saving money when it's right in front of us here. Pretty easy to see in my book.
Okay, thank you, Don. Any other input? And Steve?
So I, I like, Councilmember DeCramer did a lot of discerning and reflection and thinking about this, and I guess I lean towards Councilmembers Labatt and Schaefer. You know, when I was applying to medical school, the rules were you had to have my MCAT application in by November 2nd. MCAT application in by November 2nd at 5:00. It had to be postmarked. And that was that. And, you know, short of me, I don't even think they made amendments for deaths or accidents or anything. I mean, it was just the way it is. So, when we buy that program and people are aware that we use that program, the rules of the program are in, and everybody knows the rules. So, if you're going to bid, you do it. And if we send out the addendums, and I agree, the learning for us is if we're going to make addendums at a short timeframe for the deadline, it's just a courtesy to come out and do it. And I think going forward, we absolutely need to do that. And that's where the further discussion needs to be. So, that's where I'm at.
And I would, and I appreciate that, too. And I would actually contend that it may change material costs in the project, or we wouldn't have noted it because it was being able to push the piling down instead of removing it. And if somebody asked the question, can I do that? They must have wanted to do that for a reason. So, apparently, they thought it might be more advantageous in time and effort and result to push it down rather than to take it out. So, I think if it didn't make a material difference, why would we even note it? And why would the other contractor ask for it? So, I think it does potentially come into play. And had there been some other concern and it take a different turn when we're being arbitrary, I think we expose ourselves. So, I think, again, we bought the program. We adopted it for a reason. And I think we either follow it, or why did we spend the money? So, if we want to save money, then we shouldn't have even bought the program. So, and again, I'm not trying to pick on anybody. We've gotten disqualified for stupid things after winning a race. And if you don't get through after post-race tech, you still don't win the race. And it's just the way it is. When you go to the track, you play the rules or you stay home.
John?
Just a comment regarding my belief of what the reason for purchasing the program was. First of all, it was identified by several of the contractors. They wanted to get this program. This was something they wanted to do because it's easier for them. They don't have to show up. They don't have to carry it in. There was a whole lot more reason than just making everything very rigid and saying, okay, it's in, it's out, you're in, you're out. There was a lot to go with it. And our local contractors were very encouraging to get this going, if I remember right. So, yes, there's a reason to use the program as it is. But I do think there are times when, you know, like anything else, human intervention, human thought, consideration comes in first. And there's a situation here where I think it makes sense to call this immaterial and just accept a low bid. So.
And with that, John, I think, and Craig, you always say we have to trust our staff. And here, I'm going to trust the staff when they say what their recommendation is. That's what they're there for. And not to throw that back at you, but I hear all the time when you and I chat, we have to trust our staff. And I think we need to trust our staff on this decision.
Yeah. And I think we need to trust ourselves that we're giving staff a tool. Again, I go back to the fact because we don't know why the program kicked that bid out. So, do we want our staff spending time filtering through that opening up to find out why their bid got kicked out? Or do we trust the program? I mean, you know, I guess I'm going back to, and I don't remember exactly all the reasons why we chose to go with Bid Vault, but we either use it or we don't. And that's my whole point. And I mean, we're beating this poor horse to death. But we either use the program or we don't. And so, if we start filtering around, we're going to always filter around. And that's just, I mean, how much time do we want to spend with these? I think we're trying to be fair to everybody. But again, and without getting down in the weeds, I'm not sure exactly why or how it got missed, but the emails were sent, the system worked, and we can either use it or we don't.
So, the, I'm not sure that there's any new information that we're going to discuss at this table. Jeff, if you wanted to say something, you can. You don't have to.
I'm Jeff with Town and Country, Jeff Towne. First off, to answer your question, Marshall has a very good set of plans. We've always enjoyed working with you guys. You're pretty thorough. And to answer your question on the push, pull, or cut, it said right in the plans that it had to be a foot below grade. Doesn't matter if you cut it, pulled it, or pushed it. Wouldn't it cost anybody different? So, I bid it. I wanted to pull it, keep it. We do a lot of sheeting. We could use it in the future. So, it would not have changed the outcome of my bid or anybody else's. It just depends on what they had for equipment and to do the work. When I bid this job, I had 50 blocks we're working on up in Dawson, Minnesota. I knew that the following Monday, we started tolerancing, getting ready to pave 20 of it. I knew I was going to be in the blade, and I turned my bid on a Friday because I knew I was not going to have time to check my emails. I'm an owner-operator. I don't have 50 minions running around to help me with stuff. I'm very busy. And I did not have time to check my email or to see if there was addendas. And I did check my email after this, and I did not have one. So, the only way I knew there was an addenda, I checked on the bid doc, and it showed there was an addenda that I missed. So, I guess it caused this confusion. I'm sorry about it. But I would honor my bid as I bid it, and I would appreciate the votes. And we enjoy working with Marshall. So, I think I've done a dozen jobs here, and it's been good. So, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. And there's no question, we have good bidders, we have good contractors all the way around. The question before the council is to award the project to Town and Country Excavation in the amount of $85,094 or to award the project to RNG Construction Company at $98,950.44. And if that is the choice, noting in the motion of that award of the reason for the irregularity noted on the apparent low bid.
Well, I would make a motion, we awarded the Town and Country for the low bid of $85,094.
I will second that.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll move, we'll close the voting. And that motion does not pass. I would entertain an alternate motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we award the bid to RNG Construction in the amount of $98,950.44.
Motion by Russ. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And that motion does pass. At this point, then, we'll move to Agenda Item Number 20. This will be to consider the resolution approving the changes to the 2022 fee schedule. I'll call on Carla Drown from the Finance Department.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Tonight, you have before you the 2022 fee schedule that would be going to effect on January 1st unless otherwise appropriated by the council. There are changes throughout the document. They are redlined. I bring your attention to the special assessment for the street reconstruction, which was flagged by our Ways and Means Committee, along with they asked for a comparison between a 0% and a 1% percent change in wastewater rates. With that, I'll turn it over to discussion, and we do have some of our staff here to answer any questions. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Carla. Input from the Ways and Means Committee?
Let's say, we did have considerable discussion on this. There are two items that, in particular, and I guess, correct me if there's more than that, but the two main items that we wanted to bring this to the council as it is, but not necessarily a recommendation for those amounts. One is the, you know, what we had a discussion on earlier this evening, the $5,700 standard assessment per residential partial of that increasing to $6,000. We wanted that discussion to occur at the council. And then, as well, looking at, like I said, it was the, I can't get it right here, the wastewater utility fund. It was in, it was recommended or came in as suggested by the staff to be at zero. However, looking at the funds over the next, or really the cash flow, you might say, over the next several years, starting next year, there's a pretty sizable negative in number that maybe probably talked a little bit more by the Financial Department to kind of explain some of that, if that's actually, you know, is that money just coming from reserves? Is that something that we're going to see a hit on or whatever? So, rather than having that number go negative at that point, negative 821,000, that's why we brought in the, maybe a 1%, so make it a smaller increment as to not create a major step the following year, if that was necessary. So, reason for the discussion on those two. So, I'll just leave it at that, and other members can join in the discussion.
So, the question about the $5,700, let's talk about that one first. I believe, I could be wrong, but past practice has been to increase that by the inflationary amount that has been indicated by our bond issuance. So, the 3,000, well, 5,700 to 6,000 would be substantially more than that amount, like double, right?
I did some quick math, and if a 2% increase would be $5,814. I think increasing to 6,000 is a fairly large jump in one year. You know, I like my 2%, 3% numbers. I really do. You know, 2%, $5,814, I would support about a 2% increase.
Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, in reference to what John, we talked about this considerably. I think I've been on council three years, and this would be the third increase in three years. I think we were at 5,400, we had 57, now we're going to 6. I'm going to reference, Legal Council made a reference tonight of $100 a year since, I don't remember the year, 2006.
2006.
Whatever, yeah, 2006. So, I am ultimately opposed to a 500 or $300 increase. I mean, it's just, I don't think it's acceptable, not at all. I mean, not three years in a row. I mean, it's.
Right. Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
If we were going to consider, and I mean, we've talked about these assessments forever, and we've talked a lot about we'd like to get to no special assessment, maybe this is a good place to start. Maybe we shouldn't increase it. Why do we, why do we want to turn that disparity like we talked about? So, you pay your special assessment this year, next year, we figure out that we're all dead lame ducks, and none of us are going to file for reelection. So, we go ahead and just throw it on ad valorem and give everybody an 18% property tax increase to get rid of special assessments. And we've just created another $300 disparity for everybody that's on the current, you know, special assessment roll. So, if we're serious about moving that way, let's stop raising it and at least lock it in place. And then, we can go from there. If that doesn't work, if we can't live with that, then by God, we're not going to get away from special assessments.
Steve?
Yeah, and I'm with Councilmember Schaefer. You know, if we're going to seriously consider getting rid of it and putting it on the ad valorem tax, then agreed. You have to either freeze it or actually decrease it, and the decrease amount every year goes on to the ad valorem. So, it's a slow but steady.
Exactly.
Increase that covers itself as you go.
If we don't move to the direction we're heading, we're never going to get there.
Yeah.
So, that's one item of discussion. What was your second one, John?
The second one, I believe, was the wastewater. Was that?
And Carla, the question I had, did we not ask for you to bring what a 1% increase would do if we, on wastewater?
You asked for the rates.
Yeah, because right now, you've got it on our sheets for zero. Did we not ask in Ways and Means to bring a 1% and see what that would do?
And I can maybe interject here.
Okay. I don't see it.
Right. And I just want to maybe address a couple of points here. So, on the wastewater, so Kyle, on page 105 of the packet there, what Councilmember DeCramer was referring to, when the wastewater would go negative, that last line at the very bottom where it goes to the red 821,000, this is not a cash amount. It is just simply what we are over or under, kind of our reserve policy. So, we want this number to be as close to zero as we can. So, whether the rates are 0% or 1% is not going to move this line very much. And so, what staff had felt was more important was on page 107, where it showed what the actual fees that are being charged to the users, what the difference would be between a 0% and a 1%. I know when we discussed it, the Ways and Means, we thought it would, kind of an important role would be to slowly increase these fees to account for inflation. So, that's kind of why we wanted to show the difference between 0% and 1% for the actual user and not so much for the actual rate model because it's not going to change very much to kind of bring us back to that black.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions on that?
Are you looking for one motion or two?
I'm looking for one motion that would incorporate the content of both items of the discussion.
I will make a motion that we leave the special assessment at current fee, $5,700, and we leave wastewater at 0%.
And adopt the remaining.
And adopt the remaining items that were changed.
I'll second that.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Jim. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, staff, who put a lot of work into this. So, thank you. We'll move then to Agenda Number 21, Consider the Approval to Enter Into a Fleet Management Program with Enterprise Fleet Management. Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you remember, at the last regular council meeting, we brought forward a proposal from Enterprise on the beginning discussions of switching over our fleet vehicles to Enterprise. At that council meeting, it was recommended that both Ways and Means and the Equipment Review Committees meet to answer any additional questions for Enterprise and for, they may have for Enterprise and for staff. Both the Equipment Review and Ways Committees did meet and approved the program unanimously at both meetings. In the packet, there is an updated form that does provide additional, more accurate numbers for the entering into the program, referencing the savings that Enterprise is projecting for us. This is due to the updated sale, that market, future market value for the vehicles that we currently have. So, if there are any questions that the council have at this time, I'd be happy to answer them. Staff have spent additional, quite a bit of additional time on this and also have additional information if there is any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle. We'll, if there are any questions, but before we go to those questions, I would thank the both council committees who took an in-depth look at this recommendation for their time and review and discernment of this. Additional questions or comments or input?
Mr. Mayor, again, I just wanted to thank Ways and Means and the, drew my.
Equipment Review.
Equipment Review. I was on the maybe suggested that we get together and talk about it all at the same time. And I met with Annette, and I said, I thought, I told her I wasn't going to throw her underneath the bus tonight. So, I just said, none of us sitting up here are financial experts, I don't believe.
Nope.
But we have a financial expert. So, I went up to her office yesterday and said, "Annette, tell me if this is a good deal for the city." Plain and simple. You're the financial whiz. Tell me if this is a good deal. Because I'm looking at it, and I said, well, boy, we got, at the first number she sent me, I didn't think it was a very good deal at first with the, I think she has sent me one or two emails since then. And tonight, she gave us all a brochure, a piece of paper that shows it is a relatively good deal. I still do have some questions, and I think I asked Carla on that the other day. But there's some unknowns that we have if we go to Enterprise. We don't know, I don't think Equipment Review or Ways and Means, we don't know how much savings we're going to have with personnel not running these cars, whatever the case would be, or having these vehicles out 10, 12 years, and the maintenance increasing and everything else. We're going to rotate them all. Tell us if the city can afford it. That's, we depend on, we've heard numerous times, numerous comments, we depend on staff to give us information. And yet, you know, Annette and Carla were both, I think in both of those meetings, we never really gave them a chance to say, is it a good deal? So I'm asking Annette to tell us tonight, is it a good deal? And, and then the second part of my, my question, and I think Carla, you are going to look at that, we're not, it's not going to be affected up until October of 2022. Keep in mind that our insurance rates, license tab renewals, things like that will increase if we have newer vehicles. You know, I don't know if anybody else thought of that. I just thought, well, we have a 10-year-old pickup that the street department's running, you know, that pick, that license may be 50 bucks a year versus a new pickup is going to be $200 a year, you know? So those are things that we don't know. That's why myself, I'm saying, Annette, tell me if it's a good deal. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. And Annette, thank you for providing the spreadsheet to all of the council.
So just a little background, Kyle, if you want to pull, if you have that sheet. I wanted to simplify a little bit as to what the, the net effect on just the capital side of things would be. So as you can see here, the net cash needed for year 2022 is actually a credit to the city of 48,000. And if you can remember, I'm sure you guys remember all the numbers from the budget, but in 2022, we actually had about 153,000 that is being allocated to capital for purchase of, is it four or five different new vehicles, I believe? So we're predicting that once we're further along with the final budget, we're hoping to actually reduce the capital by maybe 50,000 to account for that. And that's just in year one. In year two, I believe we have about 270,000 in requests for additional vehicles. So I kind of wanted to run some numbers so you can see on the right side of this spreadsheet. I just kind of did a little bit of cash flow analysis here. If we were to budget about 100,000 over the next five years, you can kind of see what the cash balance would do on the far column there on H. So it would be a substantial savings, at least in the first couple of years, just for known amounts. So for the, for the capital side of things, we're replacing a lot of vehicles for a relatively inexpensive amount. And just to kind of go over Russ's concerns, the insurance rates would probably increase because the value of the vehicles are a little bit, are more expensive. On the tab side of things, city is exempt from the actual tab. I believe we just pay sales tax or there's some kind of tax that we pay. So the tabs shouldn't be a concern.
Thank you. Other questions? John?
Not really a question, but just really a comment that, you know, we're really, all of us up here are going to face and might as well bring it up right now and get to the forefront, is we move ahead with this, which I am in favor of, because I think there is savings with it. But we're more than likely going to hear it from the public saying, crying out loud, there's a lot of new vehicles out there. How'd you guys get all those new vehicles? And so we're going to have some explaining to do and I see it as an opportunity for us to explain that, yes, they are new. We're getting new vehicles, we're cutting our maintenance costs, we're cutting our repair costs, we're cutting our capital layout costs by doing a lease program. And we've got some, yeah, they're estimates, but we've got some estimates of what those dollar amounts are going to be. And I think we need to be ready because I think maybe Russ or somebody around here said, made the first comment is, oh, we're going to see all those new vehicles out there and we'll probably hear about it. Well, yeah. You know, there's a reason many, the bigger businesses lease their vehicles because it's cost effective. And that's what we're doing, is doing the same thing. It's going to be cost effective for us to do it. So I just wanted to point that out that, yeah, we're going to hear it and be ready for an answer.
And John, you're absolutely correct. We are going to have more current vehicles, we will have lower maintenance costs, and we will have lower need for capital purchase, which many times that involves additional debt, so.
And just one other thing I'd say is we're going to have a lot safer vehicles because they're having some of the other equipment on it, the backup cameras, the safety equipment, airbags, whatever else it is. So we do have, you know, it's going to be a safer vehicle out there as well, so.
Craig?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we will still be specing the vehicles and technically, I mean, it's an open-ended lease program, but in effect, we still own those vehicles. I mean, they're still belong to the city. You know, we talked a lot about this at, at the Equipment Committee and I also talked to people in the community that are in the business of automobiles that I trust and value their input. And if we wanted to assign one of our staff people to manage something like this, we could probably still do this in-house cheaper, okay? But I don't know that that's what we want our staff focused on. And so while we would save money in a payment, I'm not sure that we would actually save real costs. Because like we said in the opening of this part of the agenda, we didn't factor in either side, either option or any of the options, what is our actual staff time engaged? I know how much time we spend as a council and then staff time preparing for the council every time we go to replace fleet vehicles, you know? And I think there's a real advantage to buying as a government unit, buying low and then typically vehicles that come out of these lease maintenance programs bring a little bit higher on the lot on the auction. So I think that's really where a lot of the cost savings and that's where a lot of the economy comes in for us to buy low and sell high and don't run them very long, keep that value in them. And I think that's the big bridge. So we are going to take some heat. I am in support of this. I'm going to take some heat and town about it and I'm, and I'm good with that because I think overall for the city, this is a good move. And I appreciate our, our Equipment Review Committee and what Ways and Means have done on this. And I know that we spent a lot of time and staff spent a ton of time last year and again this year and, and you know what? If we don't like it, we can change it. We're not out, I mean, we still have those vehicle pieces. You know, Enterprise is making their money on financing this, you know, doing the, doing the money part and then, you know, handling the vehicles on each end, you know? So it, I get, I can see where the revenues are and I think it's smart for the city to do this.
Jim?
I concur with you, Craig, and you and I have had this conversation and this is where I'm going to throw us as a council under the bus. Because I believe you're correct, the staff could do it cheaper, but we as a council don't have the discipline to let them do it.
Right.
So to turn it over to Enterprise, it frees up their time. You know, we have spent a lot of time on vehicles the four years I've been in council. So I think to let Enterprise run it is, is going to be cost effective. And again, I say that, that's on us as a, as a council, but you know, that's, it's just the nature of who we are.
And Russ?
I know Administrator Hanson would be disappointed in me if I didn't bring this up, but I, I did bring up Ways and Means and I'm not sure if Equipment Review, but I asked the staff to take a look at the number of vehicles. Do we need 51 or 53 vehicles? And, and I'm not going to pick on any department that, but we got the print out, it said this one pulls a trailer, this one does this, this one sits in the winter time and, you know, now's, and Don kind of picked on me a little bit of Ways and Means and I appreciated that. But now it gives us an opportunity right now to take a look at every single vehicle. If we've got two two-wheel drive vehicles, maybe we should only have one four-wheel drive vehicle that will help us in the winter time. Now it gives us an opportunity to do that. You know, when we're buying one and two and three and four, five vehicles a year, it doesn't really give it. But we're in the process here of looking at 51 vehicles, so I'm not saying we should, well, yes, I am saying, maybe we should decrease a couple, a couple of vehicles, but I think there's, I think there's room, but that's my personal opinion. But it gives us the opportunity right now to look at that. And, and we've asked the staff, I mean, I think at Ways and Means, John, I think we just, and Don, we just asked the staff to take a fresh look at it. All, it's all we're asking, you know? That's all. Thank you.
So if there's no further items to discuss on this, I'm ready for a motion.
I'd move we approve the resolution and go into the fleet management program with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Don. Discussion?
Just to thank the staff again for all their work. I know Kyle's been doing this an awful lot, a long time too, so thank you very much.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. At this time, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess.
Stay away from the chocolate.
Stay away from the chocolate.
Where that would cross the street, it doesn't connect anything.
Right.
At this time, I'll reconvene the meeting. We are on agenda item number 22. This is the preliminary plat of the car subdivision three. The action item would be to introduce this plat and call for a public hearing. Is there a motion to that effect?
I saw move.
Motion by, well, Don and seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number 23, change order for the City Hall project. Sharon, let's start with you.
Okay, we have had the City Hall Committee review several changes in City Hall. This is the latest change order, number 14, which actually has evolved from the first issuance of this. It has been reduced. I think the original change order is around 16,000. And one of the holdups on this is just progress on City Hall, even though it's a very beautiful building and we've been occupying it since early July, there has been some remaining items. This past week, we've had significant progress made, and that has facilitated bringing forth this change order. And I have brought to the meeting Ilya Gutman, who's been a reviewer on our City Hall Committee, and especially some of the changes that were noted and presented for you. And then I also believe John Van Dyke from Brennan is here if there's any questions on the change order. But it was the wishes of at least the chairman that we bring forth change order 14 if there's significant progress. It is our recommendation that we approve this change order. And if there's questions on specifics on the change order or progress on City Hall, we can also entertain those.
I can elaborate with Sharon. And there's a little backstory here is there was a slowdown in progress. And we did send them a letter stating that we wanted the City Hall virtually completed by September 30th. There was no progress the month of August. So we actually, Sharon and I and Ray had a meeting with John, Andy, and I think Nathan, the job soup was involved with that. And I, you know, we had a pretty frank discussion. I mean, I can be fairly frank, and it was fairly frank that day. Thankfully, they weren't taking minutes. And we kind of visited back and forth. And I said, John, if you get a lot of this punch list done, we'll bring this to City Council, and I will recommend to the council that we pay this change order. They held up their end of the bargain, and I think that we now need to approach it with this change order, that we send it out to them. They made, I mean, I talked to Ray today, and the list shrank by 75%. So, I mean, they made significant progress. A lot of the stuff left hanging out there is stuff that they cannot get, you know, kind of like our plungers on our chairs. We're all short because we can't get the higher plungers on our chairs until December. There's just a back order of stuff because of COVID, and they are working on that to get that resolved. But I will give credit to Brennan that they did make great progress, and I think we should bring this change order forward and pay for it.
Are you making that motion?
I am making that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, the only problem I have with this, as a committee, we voted not to pay any bills until after September 30th. It's the contractor's responsibility to pay the subs and not the city. And as a committee, we voted back when we had our meeting not to pay any bills until after September 30th. So I will be voting against this change order.
Other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I too have trouble with this. On the one hand, I agree that you pay to get it done quickly. I mean, I remember, I'm an old guy, so I remember the earthquake in San Francisco years ago when they got all that done because they offered the contractors a per day bonus if they got it done early. But we didn't do that when we contracted this. And we were told that it would be done by a certain time before, and Lord knows the weather wasn't the issue this year. So I just have a problem telling them to get stuff done. That should be something that they do, and I don't know.
Yeah, we have to keep in mind, we are still holding a 5% retainage on them, which is what that retainage is for. This is not part of that retainage. So we're still holding quarter million dollar, you know, roundabout numbers of retainage on them, which is to push for them to finish. This is not a retainage. This is actually a change order payment.
And this is work that has been completed?
It is work that has been completed.
And much of that work has been done by subcontractors and allows them to be paid.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, has the outside work been completed?
No, that change, that-
The mortar and the brick?
That is not, yeah, that's not part of this payment.
Okay, so-
That has not been-
Again, are we going to put up with saying, well, they can't do it? Now it's October, and the snow is flying.
That's where we have that $250,000 retainage. So we still have that to hold to them. And I agree with you, Russ, but that's where that retainage will come in.
This building was supposed to be completed by May.
Correct.
And they told us, when we toured the building, I remember Nathan, I'm not throwing Nathan underneath the bus, yep, we'll have it all done by next Friday, and the cleaning crew will come in on Monday.
And I do agree with that, and I know it's taken some arm twisting. And in good faith, we had that meeting with Brennan, and they came through. And, you know, like I said, it was-
I'm very happy they came through. I'm glad.
And I'm glad they didn't take minutes when I was talking to them. But I think we persuaded them, and it went very well, so.
Okay, thank you. Sharon, you have a comment?
One of the reasons the masonry has not been completed is, will the city pay the bill? And part of the hesitancy on, from contractors and change orders is, are we going to pay these or not? And it's been a struggle sometimes. I get, we have to validate them, we have to ensure, were they in the specs or not in the specs? And there's still going to be some discussion on that yet with the retainage. I know with Red Baron, we did some negotiation at the end because of some missed things we thought on the part of the architect and some of the construction. So that's the holdup there. And, you know, that adds to cost, too. So I just wanted to comment on that.
And to be frank, since you brought up the brick, there is another significant, I shouldn't say, there's another good change order coming to do with winter heat, that we are still working through negotiations with them, that we are not bringing forward yet because, I think it's us three, I think we're not happy with, we don't agree with the change order or how it was documented. So that is coming, but that'll be worked out with retainage. And I know that sub also, last, John said that sub has not been paid, which is not our problem as a city. I agree with you on that, Russ. That's the general contractor needs to pay that sub to get him to finish the brick. So that change order has not been brought forward yet, which it'll be coming. But until the brick is done, I think it's going to be hard for to get that one out of the committee.
So on this change order, is there any other discussion?
I just want to so you know it's coming.
If not, we'll move to a vote on this motion. We'll close the voting. And a motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number 24, authorization to use excess public facilities, authority loan funds for select equipment repairs at the wastewater treatment facility. Jason, you guys start with this, and then Bob?
I'll hand that right over to Bob Van Moore, our wastewater superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're just wrapping up our huge project out there. It was nearly $15 million. Everything's going really good. We're just down to a few punch list items and a little bit of programming. So far, it looks like we're going to come in probably about $30,000 under our budgeted items. So it's been a very good project. Everything's been going really good. We've been, ever since we laid this project out, it just kind of kept growing and growing. We knew we had to shut it off somewhere so we could make an affordable project out of it. But there are a few items, there are smaller items that I'd like to get knocked out, probably tied in with this low interest loan. The other option is we take it and we'll budget for the future years. But they're all pretty critical items. They're all fairly small items. So we're sitting on probably just over $1 million of loan proceeds yet that haven't been spent and probably won't be spent. So not that I'm asking for extras or anything like this. I think this is a good time to pull these projects in. You have the memo. One is a rooftop air conditioning unit for our control room. We kind of use that to keep the electrical equipment cool. So it's something that's necessary. We have, very similar to the fire department, we have one of those Federal Pacific service panels that are known not to be functional and could cause a fire in our shop. There again, kind of a small item, but it sure would be nice to get rid of it. And then a couple of smaller other items, electrical items that I'd like to get wrapped up. So being we have the loan funds available, I just think this is a good time to wrap these in. And so I will answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. And before we get into questions, you know, thank you for the prudent job that you've done in managing this very, very large project. So thank you.
Good staff.
Okay, questions for Bob?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to commend him, Bob, as well, and his staff, because you got a $14 million project, and you came in under budget. So, I mean, that's not, that's not very common, I think, on that size of a project. So again, your staff should be commended.
Very good, thanks.
I move that we approve or authorize the additional equipment repairs and the utilization of the low interest PFA funds.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? Now we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 25, consider the resolution adopting the preliminary levy for 2022. As the council is well aware, the preliminary levy needs to be established in the month of September. It cannot be raised after that point, could be lowered. The council has had a number of budget workshops, and this recommendation does come from our last discussion at our last budget workshop. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I want to thank the finance staff, Annette and Carla, for assisting with the budget, along with all the division directors and supporting staff. I know this year I had some conflicts here and there that didn't allow me to participate as much as I have in the past. But certainly, based on the last work session, there was consensus to bring forward a 6% levy increase, which is a work in progress. We now have until December 28th, which I don't think will wait that long. We'll talk about that a little bit later. But to look for opportunities to maybe come in lower. A couple of things that are outstanding is health insurance. We were told that we would get health insurance rates by October 1st. So we're always kind of behind on that, but that's true for every entity. And that has a large impact on our budget, along with salaries. We hope in late October and November, we get comparable worth information, at least preliminarily. But I suspect that we'll be into 2023 before we really, truly finalize salaries. So for right now, I believe that most departments had a, had just a placeholder of 3% cost of living or general wage increase to compensate for that. We do know some departments are well under market, and it'll be challenging to get to where they need to be. But the comparable worth study gives us that opportunity. One other area that's outstanding right now is the library request for appropriation. And we may have heard, and I think it was briefly discussed, the county would like to have the library board revisit the budget. And I think the city wanted to ensure that the integrity of the agreement of the 1/3rd, 2/3rd funding is maintained. So that was communicated to the county. And subsequently, the library was informed. And I don't remember when their next board meeting, last night. So I don't know what discussion they had, but I'll visit with Michelle and maybe you afterwards. And right now, we currently have a 6% levy or an increase in library appropriation, not the 11%. So we'll kind of see where that ends up. But again, the general levy, which relies a lot on the property tax, doesn't have a lot of other state aid potential coming in. It's the bulk of the increase. You'll note in the resolution, we continue to try to add to the street capital. We know that costs are increasing in street construction, but this is to kind of help us overcome some of that debt and build that, build that up so we're not bonding as much in there. And it probably should be a lot higher, but you can only fit in so much at a time. EDA jumped up a little bit, and that's, that's really due to health insurance. Prior to this, it wasn't selected by the employee, and it can swing it that fast. But what you also don't see is that we're using assessing staff for support. And we didn't contract for a position. So we're seeing some savings in another part of the general budget you don't see in the EDA. Tax abatements are listed here as well. Smaller impact, and of course, we know that we'll eventually get that back. But that is something to note as well. And then some modest increase in some of our bonding. I do want to comment, and I think I gave this to Kyle, I don't know if he can show it, but in your work session, you did get, if we raise the levy 10%, how would it affect the average homeowner? And a typical business, I think average home is about 150,000. And a business is about 300,000 on average. So this is at 10%. So if we're looking at a 6%, you'd look at a $28 increase for the average home of 150,000. And for a $250,000 business, it would be 94. Again, you don't see that there because that's on 10%. I do want to add, just because we talked about special assessment, we know, we kind of like to look at other communities and cities, and we did that at the work session. You got the comparison of tax rates and how we compare with 19 other cities. We're kind of creeping up there on tax rate. But each city has its own challenges. Recently, the city of Worthington did a 17% preliminary levy increase, and that's for streets. So they may be going the route of doing a general levy. I'm not entirely sure. Wilmer now is faced with challenging street construction, and I'm not sure how they're going to go about it. So we like to kind of keep up and maintain, I've had that discussion with Jason. But if we, if we did a 20% levy increase to compensate for a special assessment, which would garner $100 for the average home, well, if you take $100 and 5,700, you'd need them to pay that for 57 years. And the question is, does a street last 57 years? Is it really enough? It's probably not enough. And I, so I think initially, we may feel good about putting it on the property tax. But at the end of the day, somebody's got to pay, and it's, it's going to be still probably right there. And I know it's something we want to revisit and talk about, and I, you know, I don't think it's such a bad idea, but it doesn't mean you're going to save money by putting it on the general property tax either. And we'll have to kind of see how we want to go about it. So anyway, Annette did provide the document, which is the resolution to approve the preliminary levy, as the mayor indicated, as a not to exceed. And we'd be looking for an approval of that particular resolution. And I know that staff is also recommending, and this is for discussion for you, if you would like to do a different date, we've suggested a truth and taxation hearing date of December 14th, which is a regular meeting for us. But we may want to consider adopting our levy on that same night. I think last year, we did the same. So we're within the requirements on the dates of the truth and taxation hearing, but we could have it earlier. We could do it later. But we, we're recommending we do it on a regular meeting night, so as long as it's after 6 o'clock. And we would likely probably make a recommendation for the final budget and levy. And I suspect sometime before December 14th, maybe late October, early November, we'll come back to the council as well and just kind of talk about things that have changed in the budget, health insurance, and in some ways, maybe, maybe we could reduce it, even though, you know, it may be challenging. So, so anyway, that's my comments. And I don't know if Annette wants to add anything. I might have missed some things, so feel free.
Any additional comments? Jim, I think you had a message from Jason, by the way. The, any other input from the council? Discussion?
I move we approve the resolution adopting the preliminary levy for 2022 as proposed.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for the public's information, that is a, does not exceed 6%. We can always come in a lower.
It's a ceiling.
It's a ceiling.
Right. And we also recognize that the property valuation did increase by approximately 3%.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion?
The preliminary levy is 10.07% that we're approving in this resolution, correct?
No.
Nope.
No, 6%. 6%.
Okay, I guess I was reading that wrong then.
Staff proposed the 10% at the work session. Staff proposed the 10% at the work session.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just for the rest of council's information, the library board did meet last night, and they're talking about a 6% increase. They would lower it to 6%. So, and I can talk to you later about that.
There's no other discussion, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass.
Could I ask Annette or Kyle or the mayor, do we do a separate motion for the truth and taxation or? Okay.
It's included in the resolution.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Agenda number 20, or excuse me, agenda number 26 is commission board liaison reports. For my part, I'll keep mine brief, given the hour of this, this meeting. Southwest Regional Development Commission did meet this past Thursday evening. Quite a bit of their discussion was revisions necessary to their personnel policy because their staff interacts with state agency staff, which because of their directives, they're required to have proof of vaccination. So that required changes in the personnel policy of the Regional Development Commission. So we spent quite a bit of time on that. With that, I'll pass it to Councilmember Schaefer.
Might have not met, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
Might have not met. The economic development meets tomorrow.
Don?
The housing commission met yesterday, fairly basic meeting. They did welcome in a new member to the committee commission yesterday. Couple of the projects they've been working on this summer are just about done and closed up for the year. And then the planning commission did meet the last week. We dealt with the one item, and we've also started the discussion about the comprehensive plan and the need for the planning commission to be active in that, with the participation of all of them. And we, of course, could always use, I think we're about two to three members short on the planning commission as well. So we could use more people applying.
Very good. Thank you, Don. John?
As Councilman Meister said, EDA meets tomorrow. Municipal utilities meets next week. The Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Commission did meet. Number of things, first of all, preparation for this Saturday, which is considered welcoming week. Invite you all to be, come to the welcoming session at YMCA, starts at 11:30. I believe the mayor has agreed to open the week with a nice speech. However, also here, did not approve getting into the dunk tank, so.
Yeah, I have a conflict with that.
Oh, okay. So if any of you want to, you know, take a spot in the dunk tank, go right ahead. The, a couple of other things with the EDI committee, you know, there's some discussion of- The couple of other things with the EDI committee, you know, there's some discussion of with the committee, with the commission, how do we react if something would occur in Marshall that is race related? And so establishing some guidelines on that primarily. As far as an immediate reaction, the way it would be handled is the co-chairs would meet with the mayor and with the city administrator and perhaps one or two others, but meet and discuss and decide an appropriate method of of action, which may be ignoring it, maybe some action towards it, some comments towards it. So if that would occur, then, you know, we have some things already starting to establish on how does the commission react to that. I think that's probably about it.
Okay. Thank you, John. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. COVID reopening, the full opening will happen, including the branches on September 18th. Marshall will go into the full opening on September 20th with additional hours on Saturday and Sunday. Friends in the Foundation had a very successful book sale during Sounds of Summer. They had a match for the first $2,000 raised. They actually almost did that in the first day. They ended up raising about 34, a little over $3,400 for the during the three days of Sounds of Summer. So they were very satisfied with that, looking at some special things in children, I believe the children's area to spend that money. Plum Creek, just a quick update, they've got the director position. They had three great candidates interview, and they're hopefully will have a new director by the end of the year. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jim?
Might have not met.
We'll move then to councilmember individual items. Jim Lister, on your end.
I'll keep it short tonight. I the only thing I want to comment on is this last week, I stopped, I received several correspondence from various people in Marshall, and some of them are good. I did receive one that was anonymous. I do not, and just for citizens to know, I will read your letter. I'll visit with you if you sign it. If you do not put a return address or do not sign it, as a council member, immediately throw it away. Sign your letters. Our city staff will work with you. We, as council members, will visit with you. We'd like to have your input. It was a it was an interesting letter. It wasn't a bad letter, but it was not signed, so it was disposed of. Sign your letters. I will visit with you. We, as a council, will visit with you. Staff will visit with you, but if they're not signed, they are shredded and thrown away in my house.
Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have is I had a few people call me regarding the turn or the new lanes on Lyon and Southview, no turn arrows in there. And I did take the liberty to call the street department and ask them, and they said they put the priority on painting the crosswalks prior to putting the arrows up. They assured me that the arrows will probably be painted this week sometime. So I understand there's been a great deal of confusion going into Southview Elementary. And then I think Lyon Street, somebody didn't know that the turn lane, what it was for. So yeah, just that's all I have.
John?
Nothing.
Craig?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Steve?
I have a couple of things. Kyle, do you have those pictures? So I got a couple of complaints, and they're from, again, it's dealing with the sidewalks and the reconstruction. And if we look up here, here's what they're doing with the sidewalks. And you see that the grass is another big issue with the boulevard, so I'm trusting that that will be taken care of. Some of the issues were just, you know, that's that's the work that we're doing there. Go to the next one. So this is brand new. We're going to be assessing people for these things, and it's not very good. I mean, I if I'm paying for it, I want the job done correctly. And so I empathize with these constituents who are are calling in voice complaint, and I appreciate it. And we don't, we when we bid out a job, we go to the lowest bidder typically, but we need to do quality work. And this is not quality. And you see the gaps in the in the yards. And again, that's when we do something as a city, we need to take control of it and take ownership of it temporarily and get it fixed up. And then another constituent called and said that it's at one place right near here, they're taking a sidewalk out. And that, to me, doesn't make any sense when we, as a council, have decided that we're going to try to do sidewalks. And as Dr. Carberry Carberry was there saying he was totally against the sidewalk, and several of us on the on the council were on his side, where there's no sidewalks, let's not necessarily put them in. That one did get put in because it made sense. There was a half sidewalk already there. But if we've already got a sidewalk, let's make it right and fix it, and let's not take it out unless there's a really, really good reason. Where this particular sidewalk is coming out, apparently, it's a bus stop, and there's kids always right there on the sidewalk. And without that sidewalk, where are the kids going to go? And that becomes a safety issue. And again, you know, safety on the Southview, yesterday, there was a kid got hit with a bike, and that is scary. Luckily, the kid was without problem, but you see the car. I drove it. It was right on the corner of De Shepherd and Southview. That car, I'm surprised that kid didn't die. There was a star in that windshield that looked like the deer had gone in. The window was cracked in right in the driver's side, starred in. You could see where the either the bike or the kid hit the hit the windshield, and he was lucky. And we need to think safety first. So taking out sidewalks when they're there, especially when kids are using it as a bus stop, makes no sense. And if if constituents or citizens want to pay to have things fixed, let's let them fix. But more importantly, let's hold contractors responsible for fixing things so we don't have shoddy workmanship. It's just because that reflects poorly on us as a city. So that's all I have.
And Jason, you may want to follow up on that later, so in your your part of the comments.
Yeah, and the constituent, one of them is here, so I don't know. No.
Don? I have three things that I'll talk about. One is the 9/11 20th anniversary event, very nice event this past Saturday. Councilmember Schaefer was a guest speaker, did a wonderful job. So thank you, Craig. We also have a couple of things, Kyle, if you could bring up. This is like audio visual in that here.
I know.
So the so I have one slide. You know, it's been in the news about the the recent census, and I think we were all disappointed that the census showed that Marshall was down by 52 people. And I think we have the opportunity to really delve into that, and Kyle has done some work on this and as well as our staff. So on the pie chart, it shows the 2010 totals, and then it shows the 2020 result. Can we expand that at all? So the the 2020, and it and it's separated out by ward. So you can see that Ward 1 lost, you know, about 550 people, according to that census. Ward 2 and Ward 3 increased. And if you go over a little bit farther to the third pie chart there, that is the number of housing additions per ward. So in Ward 1, while there was about 550 persons that the census showed aren't there any longer, there was 31 additional housing units that were added, and that's a net number. There's always some housing that's destroyed or eliminated, and there's some that is added, so that's a net number. So and in Ward 2 and Ward 3, you can see also see that there's some substantial numbers of housing that was added in the in those 10 years. So you total that all up, and it's 360 some new housing units in the entire city, yet the census says we lost 52 people. So so something's wrong. And I think where the obvious place to look at is Ward 1. And of course, Census Day was April 1. We all know that on March 18th, the world changed, and Ward 1 is where SMSU is located. That's where the on-campus housing is. That's where much of the off-campus student housing is. And those students, if they didn't, if they weren't, if they're, they were close. So those students likely were not there, likely were not counted. So I think we need to really take a look at how can this this number be challenged? Because we have potentially, you know, a couple thousand people that maybe weren't counted in the census. Maybe there's some other obvious reductions in the other wards where the increase in population should be more than what's reflected, but certainly that decrease in Ward 1 is striking. Now, the total change, and Kyle, you can chime in on this, is what, 8.5%? So it's less than the amount that is will require a redistricting of the wards or realignment. While you could do that to try to even out those numbers, it's not required because it's less than 10%. And in fact, if you would try to even out those numbers, the thing to think about in my mind would be, it would be based on numbers that truly we believe are, I believe, are wrong. So that means that the number of people that are actually voting in those those wards isn't reflective of what that census says. So I wanted to offer that up for discussion.
So I don't get to join Don's word?
So, you know, that'll be a future decision about do we redraw our lines or not? But I guess my point is, we don't have to do a thing. But more importantly, I think our numbers are wrong. Then the second thing I wanted to talk about is just, and I know I've mentioned this before, but the, you know, the the sales tax data, you know, we continue to see increases in we had about a 3.5% increase in our sales tax receipts in 2020, even though it was in the COVID year. And so far, we've had about a 13.7% increase through May and since this chart was made. The June numbers have have been reported, and June was a net roughly 40% increase in June. So so and that speaks to the strength of our retail community, our regional retail community, even through the year of COVID. And and it's also then recovering well after, I realize we're not out of COVID, but, you know, the post 2020 retail activity. Those were the three things I wanted to cover.
Mr. Mayor, could I have my time back?
You.
No.
You want to say anything?
Please, I want to say something.
Go ahead.
I want to thank Jim Marshall. I was neglecting, thank you for bringing up the 9/11 20th anniversary service or commemoration. Jim put together an amazing program, I'm sure with help from from some of his staff and others with the community. But it was, it was good. You know, we've had 10. The dedication of the park was amazing, but that service that we had on Saturday was awesome. Nice job, Jim. You did an amazing job. And I don't know if people knew Booker Hodges, but he had a message that was pretty solid. And so thanks, Jim, for all the work you did.
And thanks, Craig, for bringing that up.
You guys both do a great job, so.
Well, it's easy to work with Jim, and then Jim gives me a lot of credit that I don't deserve. So he makes me look good, and I appreciate that.
We appreciate that, too.
We'll move then, and we appreciate you, too.
Especially me.
We'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
Just most you probably know, our EDA director is out on family medical leave, even though she's still once in a while checks in, but doing a little more communication on EDA to fill the gap. I will try to lead the EDA board meeting tomorrow, but hopefully we have a good discussion. There's, you know, quite a few things actually happening. Broukell property, just again today, talked to John Nakmus about the potential partnership, maybe in some available property next to the Mercantile, if we can come to an agreement. We do have renewed interest in Block 11 from a development group out of Mankato. And we'll hopefully bring something to the council at the end of the month. We want to enter into pre-development agreement, so kind of put them on a timeline to see see something happen there. Did make contact with the mall right now, which is in ownership with a with a bank, because the the previous owner did not keep up with taxes, so the bank really stepped in there. And they don't have interest right now, and so we may have to do some more thinking outside the box on what we want to do. And of course, we're not alone. It's a very common site in terms of mall property, not just for communities our size, but quite larger cities as well. So we'll have to kind of see about that. And finally, I'm glad that the mayor brought up sales tax. We we are still moving forward with a community survey, survey, not only on our aquatic center, but we decided to expand a little bit into parks and recreation. That's because of sales tax legislation. If we were going to pursue extension, would allow up to five projects to be named. And so we want to see what kind of feedback we get. The sales tax, if, again, I kind of equate this back to bonding or general property tax. It would be challenging to do a lot of park and rec projects, and we could, we could do the aquatic center alone, but to add some other park and rec projects would be challenging. It would take time to do it. But with the sales tax, it gives us a really, really great opportunity. The mayor and I and the community services director, along with Annette, did meet with Senator Dames. I thought that was a pretty good meeting, and there seemed to be some good support there. And I did have a conversation with Representative Swedinsky, and I think we just need to get him some more information. Maybe I blindside him a little bit, but just kind of talk a little bit more about kind of what our goals are. And it will be a regional draw, for sure, the aquatic center will be. And I know our parks and recreation are utilized by the region as well. So that's just some of the of the the recent work for myself and interaction with other staff. So thank you.
Okay. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with just a few project updates. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Levy Repair Project has will be beginning soon. We were told that it they should be mobilizing into the area. I think some, there's been some contractor actions out there, but I don't think they've really started yet in earnest. But that's exciting to see that the levy and flood control project repairs will begin soon. Most of our construction projects are getting to the point of substantial completion. James and Camden and North First Street reconstruction projects are paved. James Camden needs to be seeded yet, but North First is pretty, pretty much final. So that's exciting. The state aid overlay project is is getting close. All the pavement's down, all the stripings down, minus some arrows, as Councilman Labatt pointed out, that our street department will add in as they get time. Just some minor work remains. The Parks Trail Project should start soon. They indicated that they would like to start removing some trail earlier this week. They since changed that schedule, but we expect motion in there soon. I know the concrete contractor is working for us in Westwood, the Westwood neighborhood right now, doing some curb and gutter repairs. So I would imagine when they're done with that work, they'll transfer over to the park. To discuss some of the pictures shown by Councilman Meister, you know, some of these pictures are related to the project just not being done yet. You know, the the seeding contractor is starting to work through these project sites now and will be for the rest of the week and maybe into next week. So I would expect some more motion there to do some grading work and fill in next to the concrete and prepare it for seeding and get it seeded. So some of that finalizing work will occur. I did speak with a couple of property owners as well. I reiterated that some of the same information late this afternoon. If seeding doesn't take, we do have a warranty period, and we do continue to work with the contractors to reseed if if it doesn't take yet this fall. We're seeing that on South Fourth and South First. Some of the other pictures, you know, I can understand, maybe some of the one with the curb kind of muddled in on the top, and maybe that removal line should have been moved. I have a hard time sitting here and completely second guessing our staff when they're out there doing a lot of good work. And sometimes there's a 50-50 ball or something that they miss, and maybe you could go one way or another, and they went one way. We can look at maybe that popped out curb area. But some of the some things that need to be remembered, I guess, on this project is we're not making, it's not a reconstruction project, it's not a complete rebuild, we're not making wholesale changes and improvements to the entire network and curb and everything. This is a mill and overlay on state aid routes, and we chose to replace all the pet ramps adjacent to with the state aid funds to keep that off the general levy. So we kind of went big on this, and we think that there was a lot of nice improvements made. I think that there was one concern here with the walk coming down to a cracked existing gutter with a minor hairline crack, but that was all tight and together. Our staff made a decision to save that money and not replace that curb because it was largely compliant. And if it becomes offset at a later date and it's a problem, we can always go there with our maintenance team and and make it right. maintenance team and, and make it right. So, you know, our, our staff tries their best, I think, from, to just do the best they can with, with the funding allocated, to try to be responsible with the dollars in the project and to stay true to the intent of the project. And I think they did that here. The one picture shows a transition from a 5.5-foot sidewalk to a 5-foot at a 5-by-5 landing. That staff person could have put in a 5.5-by-5-foot landing and kept it straight. That could have been a decision they made. They went with the 5-by-5 as their standard landing, and we tie that in. That's, that's what they did. That's not a wrong decision. In this case, it, it may not have been to the property owner's eye. That's a little harder to correct, but I think that if we look at the area with the pop-out, you know, I can try to meet on-site and review that with our team, and maybe we can extend the limit a little bit. But, you know, some of this is, the work's just not yet done. There's patching not finished, there's grading not finished. We'll try the best we can to make this a little bit better. I'd also remind the council, this area is likely to reconstruct the next time around, 10-to-15-year horizon. When our state aid balance recovers, we have a tremendous utility need in this area. This area will be reconstructed soon. Soon for us is 10-to-15 years.
Jason, can I make one comment on this? The, maybe two. The, I live on one of those routes currently where the resurfacing happened and the ramp improvements all happened, and the curb, wherever the curb was like broken up or, or didn't drain right, that was replaced. And the, in my case, that was prior, that was the first round of the resurfacing that happened. The, and the, the ramp improvements have really, I think, been well done. And in fact, there's a letter to the editor today really saying that same thing. You know, I, I was concerned as anyone about the, you know, the, the grass seeding that was done in July, and then, of course, we received no rain. And I didn't water my boulevard during that time. And so no grass was germinated until the rain that happened about 10 days ago, and now it came up very nicely and uniform.
We've noticed that in some of the other projects on Fourth and First, that actually some of the lawns had a lot of seed that must have went dormant, and it just.
Right.
So now that's the only part of your lawn you have to mow, right?
Yes, that's right.
You know, I should, I should address the one item. I know a glaring one that I missed that some of the property owners were quite upset about. When you mentioned taking sidewalk out, we did remove some sidewalk ramp crossings of Fourth Street. There were four, three, three intersections along North Fourth, Walnut High and Elm, where there were multiple ramp crossings on both sides of the intersection. We elected as a staff to put into the project to remove one set of those crossings. So you only cross Fourth Street at, at one location instead of two. The decision was made because they're uncontrolled intersections. A lot of data to support that crossing, pedestrian crossings of uncontrolled intersections are generally not safe. We just chose to pick one spot for it because you can't have no ability to cross Fourth Street, but we just wanted to minimize the number of them. And these ramp improvements are quite expensive to boot, many, many thousands of dollars. So there's, there is the cost savings aspect, but that was very secondary to the fact that we just usually try to minimize the number of crossings at uncontrolled intersections.
So was there, was there discussion with the bus company then about where they put the bus stops?
We, we did not have that discussion.
And that, that just might be something for future. We got to think about everything because what safe and city staff might, unless you're living there and observe and see the bus stops, you've got kids that are there all the time. And so now they're, kids are kids. They're going to stay there, and they're not going to necessarily move down to the next bus stop unless the bus stop changes.
Does the bus pick up right at the intersection? Like down Marshall Street by me, they, they stop about 50 feet back from the intersection, so they don't pick up right at the crossing. They actually pick up off the boulevard. They're right at the crossing? Okay. Yeah, and I, and I don't know. I mean, that's why I ask, because a lot of them where I see, they come off the, so the bus isn't like nose into the intersection or having to deal with, with cross traffic. So I'm just curious, and I've never talked to Hys about that either. So I, I appreciate that input. Because I noticed that. I didn't notice it until Councilman Lazinski called me today, and he asked me about some of that. And I had driven up, and I hadn't noticed that. And then I did notice some of the takeouts, and, you know, and I appreciate your explanation about that. But, I mean, there's a lot of, and I know these are, there's no win decisions here, but there's a lot of forebys on these residential streets and crossings, and it's just, you know, yeah.
Yep.
I get it. I get it both ways. I, I understand the, the property owners completely, and Jason, I appreciate your piece on it, too. And I guess it, it just is, we've just got to communicate what we're doing and
Yep.
make sure that we're not creating an unintended consequence.
Yep.
Anything else, Jason?
No, that's it.
Okay. Dennis?
A few items, a few items. Thank you. Maha Agreement, Mr. Labatt. It was reviewed last night by the Maha Board, and there's one final adjustment that needs to be made. So hopefully we're close and can bring it back for council action. You proposed purchase of property at the 800 North Highway 59 property. I'm just waiting for title work, and I believe we're waiting for a plating process. We hope to have the property replatted, so it's a sale of one, Lot 1 and Lot 2. It's going to be much easier than describing this, eight-acre meets and bounds. Now, we're not buying all of it, but we're waiting for plating to come through. And then on the Broadmoor Valley matter, service of your council abatement order requiring the removal of four properties has been served. It is posted on the property. It's published in the newspaper and has been served on a staff member out there. I've been working with Ilya Gutman, asked him for some updates. Some repairs have been made to the other properties. We had a list of about nine additional properties that we wanted. Some repairs done, and six of them have been completed. So we'll continue to work and monitor that situation. The process to obtain, to potentially obtain a search warrant is, has been signed, and it's, the search warrant's not been signed. The application has been signed, so we can submit that and see what happens. Thank you.
Okay. Questions for Dennis?
Any, any word from the Attorney General since he was out there doing it again? I mean, he came and was gonna...
I have copies of their litigation. Now, that's separate from what the city is doing, but they're kind of on parallel tracks with one another through the local district court. I've not spoken to Mr. Ellison after that date, no. But I do have his cell number, and when you call him, he says, hey, this is Keith, leave a message. I expected it to be a little more formal than that.
Bob? And I know this is kind of going on year five, but Helena, why do you laugh? I think that was the first time I was on council. My very first meeting on council involved Helena.
We have discussed that with staff, and yes, everything has gone silent. I will, I will be making a contact with the Department of Agriculture to see where they are with the cleanup process. I will report back to you next time, Mr. Lazinski.
Helen. Okay. With that, we'll move to the remaining items on the agenda. You have the administrative brief for your review, as well as the information items, including the building permits and the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Second motion by Steve, seconded by Jim to adjourn discussion. If not, by voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.
I'm going to submit my vote anyway.